Led by Mr. Terry Hodgson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the name of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join us in a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Let's see, looks like we have one visitor this evening, Ms. Deborah Swader. Are you here, Ms. Swader?
Yes, sir.
Please come up. Glad to hear what you have to say. We do ask that you eliminate yourself for three minutes or so.
I can try to do that, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. I have talked with, I'm a Rutherford County school bus driver, have been a driver for, and contractor since 1980, 85 or 86, depends on how school year you want to look at, but I've talked with Mr. Snell about this issue, I've talked with Mr. Odom, and then I brought it to the attention of Ms. McLeod. According to the school bus contract now, they have four priority lists, and you can get a, you know, I'm sure you're all aware of that. Back in 1995, I have a list of where I was on the list to get a route. I was, and I had, at that time, ten years of good service. I guess what I'm trying to say is, the list now, I've given this county a lot of years of what I'd like to think is good service, and the way, the way they're, excuse me, the way they're awarded now is that it's the luck of the draw, and I am fifty-something on the list, and there are drivers who have come in and they're like four, five years service, and they're on their third, second, there's about nine or ten that have come in, that I know of, that have come in after me, and they're on their second, they have two bus routes, and there are some that are third, they're working on their third bus route. The first one on the list this next time is Holly Lane, who has been a driver, a contractor, I don't know, five or six years, and it may be longer, I don't know, but I know she's up for the third list, she's first on the list. And every one of them on the list, I went down through there, with regards to maybe five or six, have all come in the bus service after me, and yet they're on the list, I am currently sixty-one on the list. I've given this county a lot of years, and I just think the way they're awarded is not only unfair, it's, I think it lacks integrity in that, you know, you, I would think you would want to reward the ones who have given you service for that length of time, and again, I just have one route, would like a second one, have no problem with these others that get second ones, other than, I've been doing this a long time, and each year my hopes get dashed for the second route, and, you know, I would like you to consider a policy change, excuse me, where that is concerned, so that at least maybe I would have a hope of getting another one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swader. Here, do you want to respond to that, or?
When, I mean, that may be something the board wants to take up when they rework their next contract. When is the contract up, Angel? This year?
This is the last year.
This is the last year, so there will be, that's in policy though, isn't it? Yeah. I mean, you entertain it at the next policy meeting if you choose to so.
Okay, Wayne.
And, yeah, I think we're all were really involved in this when we talked about these priority lists. I made myself intimately involved, and we discussed exactly what you're talking about, Ms. Swader, but we really could not come up with a list that would be fair to everyone concerned, because there's really no way, for as long as some of the contractors that have been with us, for us to know exactly who started when, and where, and how, and to be fair, you know, we thought the lottery was the best option.
The lottery, of course, I don't think is fair, but if you want to make it fairer, even if it were the lottery, I think, if you, of course, I have proof when I, when I started, and a lot of them do, a lot of them don't. I think it would be fairer if we got one lottery, had a list, and at least go through that list, in other words, not draw each year. Because last year I was thirty-something on the list, this year I'm sixty-one. At least if you had used the same list, I would have been a little bit higher on that second list.
But next year you could be number two, or number one.
But it's not working that way.
Well, why don't we put this on the agenda for the next policy?
Please, that's all I can ask.
We will do that.
Thank you.
It's not been scheduled, that I don't think has, Angel.
Not yet.
But we don't have a regular, until when we get enough business, we schedule one, but if we'll check with Ms. McLeod or Ms. Michaels, let's hear them.
I can do that.
Okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Number seven.
Dr. Hilton, would you step forward, please? Dr. Hilton is the head of the board of education, is the principal at, or retired principal at Thurman Francis, and she was recently honored at the state, and we would like to present this to you. It reads, Dr., congratulations, Dr. Amber Hilton, Principal Thurman Francis Arts Academy, first place winner of the 2012 Value Added Achievement Award, K-8 in Middle Tennessee, presented by Rutherford County Board of Education, Harry Jones, Hugh Grant, Stu Mark Burns, Chair Jerry Hodge, Chair Wayne Blair, Eric Holliday, Clint Tack, and Al Turner, and Randy Kelly, this day, June 13, 2012. Congratulations, Dr. Hilton. She also got a pretty nice check from the state, and I'm curious if you gave your husband any of that.
He got it, he got it.
Oh, he got it, the helping big actor from Blue Dress.
Congratulations, Dr. Hilton, we thank you for all your years of service.
Next up, we have, United Way donations from school walking track. United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties has donated $10,000 to Rutherford County schools and the coordinated school health program to build walking tracks at the two elementary schools. President and CEO Brian Hercules will make a presentation to the Board of Education. Mr. Hercules?
Welcome, Mr. Hercules, appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Dr. Burns and Mr. Gill, we appreciate the opportunity to be here, and just very quickly, what I would like to share with this group tonight is that, you know, United Way and your community has a great partnership with Rutherford County schools and Rutherford County as a whole, and we just want to say thank you for that, first and foremost, and the support that we've received over the years. A few months back, I think sometime in January, Gina and James came to us, and we began to talk about the walking trails program that we were trying to develop in the, with the county for the elementary schools, and actually, I think they came to us really asking us to help them maybe seek out some grants and some opportunities. When they left my office, I sat down with my staff and said, you know, this is something we need to get involved with. It aligns very well with those core values that your United Way focuses on in this community, which are education, health, rebuilding lives, and income. One of the most exciting parts of this was, is we talked, the opportunity not only to serve the needs of the children during the day, but also to go into some of the local neighborhoods and providing something that would be an exercise piece for the community, so they could walk over at night and use those trails. You know, we feel like in the education process, that of all the needs in our community, so many times the children are the window to those, those needs, and the educators, they see that firsthand, so I think it was a great partnership for us. So we're here tonight, I don't have the big check with me, the check, I think Gina's already processing that check, but we wanted to say, it was an honor and a privilege for us to go out and work with our community and find some grants where we were able to match dollars on two of the tracks this year, and our commitment to you is, is we're going to continue to look for those opportunities to garner some grants and continue this partnership going forward, because we think it fits very nicely into the mechanism that we use every day at your United Way. So thank you so much.
Thank you, great, thank you for coming. Brian, anybody have any questions or comments for Brian before he takes off?
I'll make a comment, if it seems appropriate that someone does the thank you for all that you've done, and United Way has been a great success in our county, and I think not only financially does it help, but I think you kind of hit right upon the kind of thing. It weaves all those core values that we're looking for, and trying to find ways to be partners with one another, that can breed other partnerships, and we appreciate what you've done.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Number nine.
Books from birth, the Rutherford County Books from Birth Foundation will make a presentation as Board of Education concerning the results of the 2012 partnership and fundraising effort.
Well, welcome, folks, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
We're going to introduce ourselves, I'm Hunter McFarland, a member of the Board of Books from Birth.
Ashley Lynn Menon, the Assistant Principal at Lightman Elementary, and I also serve on the Books from Birth Board of Directors.
I'm Landon Pritchard, the pre-K and elementary instructional specialist, and I serve at Rutherford County Schools on the Board of Books from Birth.
My name is Brian Nell, and I serve on the Board for Rutherford County Books from Birth.
And Brian's with First Tennessee Bank. First of all, I'd like to say, as a graduate of Riverdale High School, and in honor of Mr. Hewlin Watson, good evening to the greatest Board of Education in the state of Tennessee. We do have a very special presentation tonight, which we'll get to, from Mr. Gill, and, but first of all, I'd just like to say, Books from Birth is in partnership with the Governor's Foundation, and also with Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, and we started here mailing our first books in January of 2006. We have mailed now just shy of 400,000 books in Rutherford County to children under the age of five. Every child in Rutherford County is eligible, whether they move here at the age of four and a half, or whether they're born here. It's called Books from Birth because the idea from Dolly, Dolly Parton's vision was to allow every child to receive a book mailed to them, to their home and their name, from birth, from the, from the first month old, they receive a book every month. And so, so we're thrilled to have the partnership of the Rutherford County school system, and we're thrilled to be involved in this community in this way, because we, MTSU's doing a tremendous research study that's endorsed by the Board of Regents State, from the state level, to help us research the impact that we're having, but we're confident that, you know, over the ten-year, once we have about ten years of history, we'll be able to see some, some measurable results, that getting books in the hands of children from birth is, is having in our school system. So thank you very much for your support, and I'm going to let Brian talk about the fundraiser and why we're here tonight.
We are very appreciative of the partnership with the, with the school board and our organization, because I think a lot of people in our community understand what we do, but a lot don't understand that our task is to generate the revenue to cover half of each month's book bill, and Dolly Parton's Imagination Library and the Governor's Books Foundation covers the other half. So this partnership is helpful for us, because our monthly book bill runs in the neighborhood of eight to $10,000 a month, and, and any revenue that we can generate to help us provide the funding to allow us to recruit more children and enroll more children into our program, helps us get these books in their homes, and give the parents that friendly reminder once a month to sit the kid in their, in their lap and read a book to them, because sometimes the parents may need the reminder too. We want to thank Mr. Gill and the rest of the school board for your endorsement of our, of our program and this program, and we're happy to announce that this year's has been a tremendous success, and, and the schools rose over $25,000 for our program. That's significant. And what we've asked each school to do is, is raise $1 per student, and kind of set that as a goal, and I'm very pleased that the two schools that will, that will, will receive some funds back from us as part of this partnership. Central Magnet is, is the first school to, to be recognized tonight, and they rose nearly $3 per student, so they should be commended.
Is there a representative from Central Magnet? If you're asked very much for your support. Boy's got a big check that I appreciate. Thank you.
And our, and our next school, which, which rose over $1,000 for our program, is Stewart's Creek Middle School. Okay, the, the, these checks, if anybody's curious, the, the check for Stewart's Creek Middle is $1,000, and the check for Central Magnet is $2,500, for the principal to use in their school. So this really is a great way to, to generate a partnership for Books from Birth and these schools that, that we're recognizing tonight. So thank you for the partnership, and as a token of our appreciation, I'm going to give the attention back to Hunter, to, to recognize Mr. Gill with a, with a special token of our appreciation.
So as, as Brian said, we, we do spend about $8,500 to $10,000 a month, because a little over 8,000 children in Rutherford County get a book from us every month. Dolly Parton has written a book called I Am a Rainbow, and she sent us an autographed copy that says, "For inspiring a child to read, love, Dolly Parton, 2011." And the reason we want to give this to Mr. Gill is because in 2005, when we had our very first public event, which was in the Smyrna Town Center, that room was filled with Rutherford County school principals and assistant principals, and every year that we've asked for help to involve support from the local school system, Mr. Gill has written a letter asking principals, requiring principals to participate and support us, and Mr. Gill is largely responsible for the success of our program here in Rutherford County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, thank you all for coming, and thanks for your outstanding work.
Okay, ten. Rutherford County students, pardon me, Rutherford County School of State writing examinations. Rutherford County students have experienced sustained gains in writing proficiency since 2006. On a one to six scale, with four-six indicating proficient scores, our summer writing academies and sustained classroom emphasis on writing resulted in improved proficiency percentages. Grade five students' proficiency percentages increased from 83% in 2006 to 92.2% in 2012, and grade eight from 90% to 95%, and grade 11 from 85% to 95%. The state ESEA waiver, beginning in 2011/12, removed writing as one-third of the calculation for reading and language arts proficiency. Common Core assessments will now incorporate writing into constructive response questions for all tested subject areas. Rutherford County has accepted the challenge of being a Reading and Language Arts Common Core State Pilot System for grades three through 12, beginning in the fall. You know, obviously, Don, you know, you've done a good job, your department has, and the principals have, and the teachers across the county, it's remarkable how much we've improved our proficiency in writing, and I think a lot of it has to do with writing across the board, the academies that we put on in the summer, and the fact that we've put such an emphasis on improvement, so congratulations to you and anyone, everyone else involved.
Yeah, those are very nice increases there.
Absolutely.
I didn't understand the change in the testing, though. So there's not going to be a writing assessment anymore?
It's part of the...
There's a duty writing assessment, but it used to be one-third of the AYP. We went to AMO, and they excluded the writing component, and it's built in, and constructive response questioning that will come in 1415. But even though this year, that writing score is not included in the calculation.
Okay. I'll have to ask you afterwards, because I still don't understand. Anybody have any comments or questions on this?
It's good news, that's the bottom line, and we're showing great progress.
Yeah, eleven. Textbook adoption for a book not on the state list, the construction department requesting approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract, and the rules, regulations, minimum standards, for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under section 1.02, program selection. And we're recommending that you approve the following textbooks not included on the state adoption list, Latin for the New Millennium Level III, and Tennessee Bridge Math.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Twelve.
Special course request, the construction department's requesting permission to make an application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines. Rule 520-1-3-052A, local school systems may offer special courses not listed in 520-1-3- .06 on experimental basis. Minister of Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval by the State Board of Education. Middle school students completing high school one-on-one will receive one-half CTE credit for high school. Recommend that you approve Rutherford County, make application for the following courses to be offered in the named schools 2012/13, high school one-on-one, third-year request for Oakland Middle, and third-year request for Whitworth County Middle.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Thirteen.
Brown Chapel Elementary School Outdoor Pavilion, Principal Kelly Gustries requested permission to construct a 24-by-30 outdoor pavilion on Brown Chapel Elementary School campus. Eagle Scout Troop 374 and volunteer community members will construct, construct the pavilion under the supervision of Eagle Scout Tyler Allen Key and his father. Pavilion will be constructed adjacent to the playground and the fenced-in area at no cost to the board, with concrete floor, pressure-treated lumber, truss roof, framing, and metal roof. And I might add that we've discussed all these at the work session last night, and we're not just blowing through. Recommend that you approve construction of a 24-by-30 pavilion at Brown Chapel Elementary School by Eagle Scout Troop 374 and community volunteers at no cost to the board.
So moved.
So. Any discussion?
Are they here tonight, to be recognized?
Mr. Key? Don't think so. It's a major project they're taking on, though, I mean, that's... Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Train HVAC renewal program, Rutherford County Schools, has several pieces of train HVAC equipment in our schools that are nearing the end of their useful life. The engineering and construction department requests a proposal from Train Corporation to repair and re-warranty these units. The train R renewal services fits these guidelines with both repair and five-year warranty. Schools that would benefit the renewal program are Buchanan Elementary, Christiana Middle, Christiana Elementary, Eagleville, McFadden, Siegel High, Smyrna Primary, Thurman Francis, Walter Hill Elementary, and Wilson Elementary. Eagleville's chiller's with the two main compressors is well beyond its life and in need of repair this summer to be ready for the 2012/13 school year. Estimated cost per chiller is $29,734 plus $2,974 for a one-year service agreement. Engineering will start the program with Eagleville and fund it from the 2012/13 maintenance budget. The rest of the schools on the list would be prioritized according to the percent of useful life to be refurbished in coming years. Recommend that you approve using train renewal services for repair and re-warranty of existing train equipment. Program will start with Eagleville School, will be funded through the 2012/13 maintenance budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
C, Siegel High School sports lights. Mr. Ken Dolan is requesting permission to install six lights at Siegel High School on the existing stadium light pole to light the parking lot for the summer and early fall band practice. The lights will be focused on the parking lot across from the stadium, a neighbor, Mr. Hooper, who could be affected by the lights, has been contacted and is in agreement with the installation. The lights will be installed by S&amp;W Contracted Company at no, at a cost of $7,190 and funded by the Band Booster Club at no cost to the board. Recommend that you approve installation of six lights at Siegel High School on the existing stadium pole by S&amp;W Contracted Company at a cost of $7,190, funded by the Band Booster Club at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Fifteen, financial, pardon me, fourteen, financial matters. You know, it's a little harder to read sideways. I don't know how, I don't know how close you want me to get.
That's plenty, right there.
Anyway, revenue. This revenue amendment has a net increase of $846,833 in 2011/12 revenues. The increase in local sales tax, $1,650,000, is largely offset by a reduction in the BEP growth funds of $1,260,000. The other increases and decreases reflect better estimates of where those revenues will come in this year. The amendment also increases fund balance by $722,131, and adds an additional $124,702 in expenditures. Most expenditures in the Board of Education Function 72310 uncover the cost of the superintendent search, additional funds being transferred to the liability insurance fund, and additional trustees commission, and recommend that you amend an additional $846,833 in 2011/12 revenues, and additional $124,702 in expenditures, and to increase unassigned fund balance by $722,131 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Two, staff. The staffing amendment real allocates $45,393 in already budgeted labor and $2,021 in benefits in order to fund two vacation payouts and additional scheduling time for the school attendance clerks who are working with a new scheduling module. The other line item increases are to make sure all staffing lines are fully funded for the year. $47,414 in already budgeted labor and benefits are being reduced in order to fund the increases. No new funds are being used. Recommend that you amend $47,414 in increases to various staff and benefit line items, and to reduce other staff and benefit lines by $47,414 in order to fully fund staffing line items as presented.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Other expenditures. $499,010 in other expenditures covered by this amendment are all within major function and uses no new funding. Major items are $70,000 in 71,1049, more purchases are better recorded here than in equipment. $80,784 vocational textbooks, this is an adoption year. $58,250 in other student support contract services. This cleans up expenditures between this line and government services, governmental services. Our athletic trainers have been moved to this line, the funding already in 72,13309 for them was enough to pay the additional security charges, the schools are paying $35,000 in special education contracts, a legal... The schools are paying thirty-five thousand in special education contracts, a legal settlement, hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars reallocating maintenance repairs and services to various line items as they were used this year. Recommend that you amend four hundred ninety-nine thousand ten dollars in increases in various other expenditure line items, and to reduce four hundred ninety-nine thousand ten dollars in other expenditure line items in order to cover projected expenditures as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Do we have the list of the minor expenditures? Well, you got four hundred and some thousand dollars, that doesn't come before a some thousand dollar question.
That is in the tab, yes sir. You got me there.
That's what I was trying to get at then. And it's under amendment. Other expenditure.
Yes, sir.
You okay? We can wait if you need to read something.
Yeah, I don't.
I just listed the major items. Oh, but they're a hundred ninety-four dollar adjustments.
I see one for forty-five hundred, is that, that type of thing? Four hundred ninety-five dollar, I, I, I understand.
And this is the end of the year juggling you do every year, right? Plus, it's only half a million dollars. Which is out of two hundred.
Outfit, right.
Yeah.
Let's see, we got a motion, didn't we, Joyce? In a second, so any other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Vocational textbooks, this amendment moves four hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred five dollars from regular education textbook budget to vocational textbook budget, so that the vocational textbook adoption can be charged to the proper line in the budget. The amendment just real allocates already budgeted textbook funds and does not impact the regular education textbook purchases. Recommend that you amend four hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred five dollars from the regular education textbook budget seventy-one one hundred dash four nine, four four nine, to the vocational textbook budget seventy-one three hundred four four nine in order to fund the vocational textbook adoption.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Cafeteria amendment, this amendment adds fifty thousand dollars to the line for cafeteria workers in two thousand two hundred thirty-nine in related benefits. It ensures that there will be enough funding to cover the summer nutrition feeding program. No additional funds are involved, existing budgeted funds are being used. Recommend that you amend the two thousand twelve budget by fifty-two thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars for cafeteria workers and related benefits to fund the amendment by relocating other labor and benefit lines as presented.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Transportation, per section eight of the bus contract, which covers assignability of a contract from the contract holder to another individual, the transportation department's received a request from Lee Cole, contractor of bus one seventy-three, dated May the twenty-third, two thousand twelve. Mr. Cole has requested his contract be assigned to his father-in-law, Lowell Duke, contractor of bus one twenty-five, due to his commitment and involvement in other activities. A letter from Mr. Cole requesting the bus contract be transferred to Mr. Duke is presented. Section eight, part B of the contract states, under special circumstances deemed sufficiently unused of a warrant approving an assignment of the contract, the board may, in its discretion, approve an assignment of the contract. Therefore, the board must decide if this request meets the contract language and approve or deny the request.
Okay, we had discussion of this last night, we need to say yea or nay.
Based on the conversation that we had last night, and the specific language of the current contract, I move to deny the request.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
Per section eight of the bus contract, which covers assignability of a contract from the contract holder to another individual, transportation departments received a request from James P. Baltimore, contractor of bus thirty-four and forty-two. Mr. Baltimore's father was Pete Baltimore, contractor of bus forty-four from nineteen sixty-two to two thousand twelve, and passed away on May sixteenth, two thousand twelve. Mr. James Baltimore is taking care of bus forty-four for the past eleven years, providing drivers and maintenance. A letter requesting the bus contract be transferred to James Baltimore is presented, and we recommend that you approve the contract for bus forty-four to be transferred from Pete Baltimore to James Baltimore effective immediately.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. C.
Two thousand thirteen, pardon, twelve thirteen bus contractor list pursuant to policy one forty-one bus contract awarded procedures. The new contractor list for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year are presented. These four lists, first priority, regular bus drivers, second priority, part-time or sub-drivers, third priority, those who have turned down the opportunity, and the fourth list, those who currently own one or more contracts, are for approval in order to facilitate the awarding of new bus contracts on a timely basis for the beginning of the new school year, and thereafter, his contracts are turned into transportation department throughout the year. And we recommend that you approve the potential first, second, third priority contractor list, and the fourth list of current contractors for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Kim, we, we just kind of discussed this a little bit, so I, I need some separation as to how we approve this this evening and then come back next meeting and have it on the agenda, so where's, where's the difference in separation?
Well, that's a good question, I mean, I guess I would assume that if we were to change the process, it would be for the following year.
We've already drawn the list.
Pardon?
We've already drawn the list.
For twelve thirteen, you've already had the drawing? Okay.
And the process by which you've drawn the list is as outlined in the contract and policy.
Policy.
Policy. So, so we're looking to follow policy as it is now? Possibly looking to change the policy in next discussion.
That's certainly my thinking, because I assume the folks already know, well, it's already out. Number one through whatever would be quite annoyed if we changed it at this stage, I would think.
So this vote just ratifies the results of adhering to the policy?
Right. And so any discussion that the policy committee has, in my view, would be talking about potentially making a change for thirteen fourteen.
That, that answers my question.
Other discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. A few years ago, priority list one, two had many names on it, if I remember correctly. We have seen this revolve from now very few names on the priority list one and two, to many lists on priority four. And priority four came about because of this very situation, didn't it, Mr. Snack?
Yes.
Because we envisioned that one and two would become less and less, and to assure that we had drivers and contracts filled is how priority list four came about.
Because we had a time when we were a little bit worried, right?
That, that's correct.
That would be the folks on the list, yeah.
That's correct, so this has revolved over time to meet what we thought was a coming need of, of the system. And so the four list is, is certainly, in my opinion, a, a good list. Now, how they are arranged on four, you know, that is policy, and that can be addressed that way, but I think that we are on the right track with this type of approach.
Eric.
The bus contract, we made mention that it's, it's the last year, do we know exactly when it's wrapping up?
Next, next June.
Next June, okay.
So next spring, and I guess it's in the spring typically that we look at that, early summer.
What's that grand?
Nothing, it's a, it's a great process. No, it's, they're very involved as they should be, the drivers, contractors rather, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss those things. Do we vote? I'm not very with it tonight, am I? We need to vote, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Yeah, I think I'll do sixteen. Naming of the Smyrna High School gymnasium. We recommend approval of a case, well, we've all known about this, so I don't know, we're not going to have Mr. Gill recommend approval, I'll recommend approval. Motion to name the main gymnasium at Smyrna High School to Harry Gill Jr. Gymnasium.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well-earned.
Yes, it is. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Seventeen.
Approval of non-renewal for non-tenured teachers, the board must authorize the director of schools recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers. Recommend that you authorize the director of schools recommendation for additional non-renewal of non-tenured teachers at the conclusion of the two thousand eleven twelve school year.
So moved. Sir.
Discussion. Again, as we mentioned last night, the differences, two names have been added to this list. And are they giving any special help in the job search process, or is that not part of this?
Not, not special help in particular, but they are eligible to reapply for positions and eligible for employment in any other system.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted. Eighteen.
Dismissed of a tenured teacher, the board has been provided with a memorandum containing charges against Sybil Tyson Rich, who is a tenured teacher with the board. Ms. Tyson Rich has been suspended without pay pending board action. If the board sustains these charges, Ms. Tyson Rich will be presented with a copy of the charges and a statement of her rights under Tennessee law. And we recommend staying the charge against Sybil Tyson Rich as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion's adopted.
I think we did nineteen last night.
There's no need to read those again, it's information only.
Proposed director of schools evaluation, recommend approve the director of schools evaluation timeline and evaluation instrument is presented to the board by Randall Bennett, Tennessee School Board Association, on May fifteenth, two thousand twelve.
Discussion.
The proposed timeline that we have will not fulfill the requirement in the contract that the director of schools be evaluated once per year. And I feel like that we should adhere to our own contract and, and intentions there, and I'd offer an amendment that the proposed timeline be backed up to the two thousand twelve thirteen year.
Okay. So in other words, which of these? You move all of those dates? Are you looking at the timeline?
I am.
Which of those dates would you move forward?
All of them except July one, two thousand twelve.
I mean, the effect of, well, let's see if there's a motion first, but I mean, the effect of that would be in one month, when September's how many months? Almost two months, the forms would be sent to the administrators, raising the question of whether that's really enough time and the job to, for them to evaluate, Mr. Odom, but. Is there a second to the amendment? Okay, motion dies due to the lack of a second. Anything else, Eric?
We'll be out of compliance with our own contract that says that we evaluate once a year.
Jeff, can you step up? What's your take on that issue?
Well, you can always amend the contract if you need to. If it's the board's will to adopt this schedule here, subject to Mr. Odom's approval, we can do an amendment to the contract if that's what the board chooses to do.
So the contract we just approved then says, what, annually?
Yes.
Okay.
I certainly understand that it's not going to be, you know, an evaluation that's going to be very telling, but it does put us on a path of establishing goals and, you know, the, the evaluation process, and keep us on a, a good and steady path. I think that it's important to set that in place and let it be an annual occurrence that, that doesn't come up, because we say, oh yeah, we want to take care of this, but it happens every July first, every September first, every September fifteenth, et cetera, et cetera.
I mean, I agree with that part, we should have been on a more strict schedule about when we did it. I don't agree that we should start it this year, I mean, I just think it would be not quite meaningless, but almost.
Yeah, we may need to fix it because it's, it's an aberration.
Right.
Because Mr. Gill was here for nine years, so it was, it was a given, but, you know, when you have a change in, in leadership, I mean, you know, and especially when you may have new board members, it's problematic to try to do an evaluation, you know, that soon into the, into the year, so.
And yet in years to come, new board members will come in that September timeframe, and so even if we don't evaluate this proposed timeline in connection with the fall of two thousand twelve, perhaps the proper evaluation is the timeline for years to come. Is it proper to have an evaluation in September? I only raise the issue to make an intentional decision with, you know, all of the factors that are involved. I don't think that it's inappropriate to do an evaluation, because the evaluation process is not only what has occurred, but what will occur. It sets an expectation as well as evaluates what has happened. And in that sense, perhaps after two months, it's exactly the right time to have an evaluation. Everyone, there, there'll be no misconception that there's very little to evaluate on.
Okay.
How are you going to evaluate after two months? Or what, what are you going to evaluate?
Two months of performance.
Well, there wasn't a second for your motion, so it seems to me the other option is to amend the contract, unless somebody has changed their mind on, on what Aaron is saying. Do we need to amend the contract?
Anyway, it's, we don't have to amend the contract, Mr. Odom's okay with the new schedule, we could do that by letter agreement, that would be fine. If the board wants to later on try to consider doing evaluations earlier than what this schedule proposed, you can always come back and, and reevaluate that if you want to later on the year as well. I think the contract provides for an annual evaluation, just to make sure an evaluation is done once each year. Obviously, we're in an aberration year because we have a new directory coming in, so it's an unusual situation to get this, get started at this point.
So what do you need from us in order to do this letter, just?
Well, if you vote to do the schedule that you're talking about doing here, then we just need to submit that to Mr. Odom for his approval. So it's up to the board, I mean, we, the board can go either direction on this, they want to go.
The less fuss, the better, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, in terms of.
So do we need a motion for this letter to?
No, I think what Jeff just said was if we approve this, he'll, by implication, we will have said this is what we want to do.
And we can take that, Mr. Odom, and make sure he's agreeable to that, which I would think he would be agreeable to.
In that regard, then, I'm very pleased to see the additional criteria that have been added that are specific to Rutherford County, that Randall Bennett put in there. that are specific to Rutherford County, uh, that Randall Bennett, uh, put in there. Mr. Odom has, uh, shared with me personally that attention to these, uh, test criteria and closing the, the gaps, uh, that is truly going to be the goal of every system in the state of Tennessee. And our achievement of that is one of his highest priorities, and it, it's good to have it right here on the, on the evaluation and a clear expectation.
Right. Other discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion's adopted. I have a presentation to make on behalf of the board, but before we do that, if there's general discussion, now would be the time.
In the last steering committee meeting, uh, I was recommended to a school and road board rezoning special committee. Uh, the county commission has not weighed in on that, but I would encourage all of the school board members and future school board members to, uh, please share their thoughts and ideas. It is my wish and intent to represent, uh, the will of the board as well as the, uh, Zone One constituents that I represent.
Do you have a sense of, apparently, they can do this at any time, they can redraw our zones, is that correct, Aaron? And then, I'm not sure how that plays out in terms of future elections, and when they take effect and all of that. Is that what you'll be discussing on this committee?
We will, and it's my understanding that it is, uh, state statute that will have to be amended that, uh, defines which county commission districts make up the school board zones and the road board zones. Uh, the intent of the, uh, special committee is to examine that and, and potentially change it, but I have also gotten the sense from those that are, that have been involved in the process that it'll be quite lengthy. It may be out to two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen, before something like this could be put into effect in order to maintain, uh, a commitment to incumbency and, and things of that nature.
That'll be an interesting discussion, uh, well.
Is that known as a private act, to get that, for that term, or?
I think so, yes.
So are, is it statute that says which commission districts make up which board districts? Okay.
What I've seen of it, it's done in haste, and, and it, it went, went by the wayside and then suddenly it came back up again. Uh, I think there were several people that were targeted maybe, but, uh, uh, it seemed kind of convoluted the way they did it. Didn't, didn't appear to be of any value.
I think the effect is the commission districts aren't going to change any more than they already did, but the bo- road board and school boards might change dramatically, which I think I have a bit of a philosophical problem with that myself, but.
That's certainly the way it stands right now, and I think that the county commission is to be commended for putting together a special committee, committee and not acting in haste, but allowing this to be studied correctly. Uh, it, it may be that no change, uh, results from this, uh, that certainly is a possibility, but it would leave situations like, uh, Wayne Blair's district that is not contiguous right now in the, uh, in the manner that the, uh, county commission districts are drawn, and, uh, you know, certain situations like that. So it, there are things to be looked at, what will come of it is still very much an open question.
Okay, well, thanks for that.
Bless you for serving.
Yeah, really, that would be a fair.
It will.
Other discussion? Well, I think we all know that this is Mr. Gill's last board meeting, so you've been the only superintendent that anybody up here has, uh, worked with, and for four of us, it's been eight years, and we have really, well, I'll speak for myself, I've certainly enjoyed it, and I think the others have as well. We've, we've had our ups and downs, but they mainly have been ups, so, uh, we wanted to recognize you and thank you for the, not only your years of service as director, but your, the forty years of service to the district, so.
And I'll let board members have a say here in a minute, but the board wanted to present to you a pretty big box from Rolex.
This looks a little bit breakable, so.
Nervous.
This, uh, I don't know, what, what do you call it, a cup? You can go home and have your iced tea in this, uh, this chalice. Let me read what it says, it says, presented to Harry Gill Jr., an appreciation of your dedicated service as the director of schools, two thousand and three through two thousand and twelve, from the Rutherford County Board of Education. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate.
All right, well, board members, here's your chance, your last chance. Tim?
All right, when I, when I think of Harry Gill, i- i- if we renamed the, the gym at Smyrna High School tonight, it, there's a little bit of that, that, that's a bit of an injustice, because what I think, I, I, I can just imagine Campbell Brandon sitting down on the gym of old Smyrna High School, stomping that boot down on that floor, and you guys are playing basketball, looking down there and think that that might be a director of schools in Rutherford County at some point in time. I bet Campbell would have never bet that, but, uh, uh, a lot of good things, uh, have occurred and, and it's, a- a- and, and I will say this, uh, when I, when I went to Mr. Gill's office to just share with him my, my possible intent for running for school board, he was very receptive of that, very, uh, uh, open to, to that possibility, encouraging as a matter of fact, and I, I appreciated his honesty at that particular time with me about the, the challenges that the, the situation may bring, but, uh, I think it, it brought a, a good openness that we were able to share back and forth, and I, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
I have a story that I don't know that I've told publicly. My children, uh, went to several different schools with, with rezoning and, and whatnot, and, uh, uh, Mr. Gill was, uh, principal of Cedar Grove, and, uh, Zach and Hillary rezoned to Cedar Grove, and I really didn't want them to, uh, to move again. And, uh, so I took a zone exempt, uh, to Mr. Gill to, to sign for him to stay where they were, and, uh, and he said, well, I think you're doing your children an injustice by not letting, letting them come to my school, because they will get a great education. And he signed it, and I walked away, and I looked at it, and I came back and I said, Mr. Gill, we're staying, I tore him up, so. And, uh, they did, under your leadership, they, they got a great foundation, and, uh, I thank you for the success that they've had in, uh, in your service to this, to my county, and, uh, God bless you, Mr. Gill.
Appreciate it, Wayne, and I, I would say this, I, I didn't steer you wrong, because we had nineteen As and one B and value added during our tenure at Cedar Grove.
Yes, sir.
Great school.
Yes, sir.
Terry.
I'd just like to say, uh, I'd like to commend you for your job well done, and, uh, I thoroughly enjoyed working with you over the last eight years, whether, I know we didn't jive all the time, but, uh, we've had a few, few, I don't know what you call it. It's a great, it's a great.
Straighten you out.
We had straightened out a couple times, I guess, but, uh, uh, I want to wish you the best in, uh, whatever you do from here on.
Appreciate, appreciate. You know, it, it's the kind of job, I don't think that you'll always jive, uh, we have before us so many complex issues, tough decisions to make, and, uh, you know, sometimes where you sit determines where you stay, and I like to say that, and, and we, we think slightly different, but, uh, you know, I've had, always had a good relationship by and large with the board, some of the guys that, you know, Doris and Rick and Mr. Ed Jordan, uh, Chris Wire, and those guys were tremendous to work with, and have you guys. Uh, and I'd encourage you to hang in there and support Mr. Odom, I know you will, he's a highly competent individual, and he'll do a great job. I have been really blessed to work with what I consider the best staff anywhere, and, uh, they're really more than just coworkers, they're friends, uh, and that's certainly true with Joyce. She said she wouldn't go cry, although she has once or twice, but she'll, she'll get over that. But at any rate, uh, you know, it's been an honor of service capacity, we've got a lot of great things done over the last nine years. I'm particularly proud of the schools we've gotten, how safe it is, uh, the energy, uh, initiatives, the, uh, relationship with the commission, the academic increases, and I hear from so many people that we're so, so much, it's so friendly here, and people, it's a welcome atmosphere. The human resources has done a remarkable job, Gary, you have, Jeff, uh, Jeff Reed, been a blessing to work with Jeff too, so. Uh, Angel Mike, same host through you guys, James, and, uh, you know, I wish all of you the best.
Well, thank you very much, Aaron. Any final words? All right, we're adjourned.